Monday, May 16th, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Potem Elliott?
Here.
Trustee LaKind?
Here.
Trustee Romanello?
Here.
Trustee Shaining? Trustee Shaining?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Stevens?
Here.
Okay, before us, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any motions or modifications, or are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. First item on the agenda, oath of office. Ms. Hogan.
Aye, Redman Ramos. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Colorado. The laws of the State of Colorado. And the ordinances of the town of Monument. And I will faithfully perform the duties. Of the office of trustee. Upon which I am about to enter. To the best of my ability. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Well, we welcome Trustee Ramos and look forward to having him as part of the team. Item 5A, Girls of the West. Ms. Toma. Oh, okay. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mike McKernan. I'm the president of the Pike's Peak Range Riders, and I want to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come out tonight and talk about a number of our upcoming projects. A little history about the Pike's Peak Range Riders. Back in 1949, a couple of local businessmen in Carda Springs, Ken Brickhardt and Everett Cronover got together. They had a real passion about this rodeo that was going on out at the Broadmore, and it was kind of a brainchild with Spencer Penrose. And they wanted to figure out a way to promote it, so they said, you know what? Let's get 40 of our buddies, if they have a little bit of money and a horse, and let's take a ride around Pike's Peak and stop at all the little communities, and we'll just tell them all about our rodeo. And through that, the Range Riders were born. A few years later, they started a new tradition called the Western Street Breakfast. And that was the official ride-out for what became the Range Ride. This year's Street Breakfast is going to take place on June the 15th, downtown Carda Springs, and we look forward to seeing you all there. It really is a fun, fun, fun tradition. It really supports our Western heritage, but more important, it really checks one of our boxes for the Range Riders of supporting and promoting the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. The mission for the Pike's Peak Range Riders is to, number one, support the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. Second is to support and play a part in the Pike's Peak Range Rider Foundation, and then also to really continue and educate on our Western heritage here. You know, we talked a little bit about the Street Breakfast, which is one of our big events, but we also have another, a number of organizations that we're involved with or that are part of our organization, our group. One of them is the Pike's Peak Rangerettes. That's a group of young ladies, 12 to 18 years old, and they ride their horses at the various rodeos around the state of Colorado to promote the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. This year, we have 18 girls on our team, and they're doing a great job. It's not easy to make that team. There's a lot of work that has to go into it. Most importantly, it's their own funding. They have to support themselves. There's another group. It's a group of men, the Pike's Peak Pivots, and they also ride the various rodeos, and they go around the state and, again, promote our community, promote our big rodeo. Our organization, the Range Rider Foundation, is our 501(c)(3), and they do a number of fundraising events to support youth activity involving equestrian, or livestock, or rodeo, but for kids. It's really 100% kid-focused. And one of my favorite events that they put on every year is an event that's going to take place on June the 25th over at the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame, back in the arena, and that particular event is referred to as the Special Rodeo. That's where Carda Springs Therapeutic Riding Center and Stable Strides bring their young people, and they have a small rodeo with a bunch of kids, and they have rodeo queens, and they give buckles, just like they do in the big show. But man, when you see the smiles on those kids' faces every single year, it makes you, it's addictive. You gotta come back, and I'd love to see you all there for that. That's a fun time. The other aspect of that organization is a real neat program called the Pike's Peak Posse, and that's a group of local businessmen that get together and then go out to the El Paso County Fair, as well as the state fair, and they buy the animals through the auctions of our local 4H kids. Those kids get 100% of that money, so they get the money for raising their animal, and I'm gonna tell you, those kids really do appreciate that effort. I want to thank you very much again for the time, and now I'm going to introduce my friend, Dan Ferguson.
Great, thank you, Mike, and thank you, everyone, for having this time for us. I'll be fairly brief because I'm gonna be followed by someone who's a much better communicator than I am. But one of the things that's very new for our rodeo this year that you may have heard about is that we're hosting the Professional Rodeo Cowboy Association National Circuit Finals. It's called the NFR Open, and it used to be down in Kissimmee, Florida. They were looking for a new home for this national event. It's really the third jewel in the crown of the national finals rodeo system, followed from Las Vegas, of course, knows about the NFR and the tour rodeo finals, but the circuit finals, which is now, as they call it, the NFR Open, is a big, big deal. And they ultimately landed on our rodeo to host it for them. So that's the biggest change. It's the same rodeo that everybody is very much used to seeing, but I have to say, you gotta get your tickets early. We're anticipating sellouts. We've been selling out the last couple of years, anyway. Ticket sales have gone very well, but encourage everybody that's tuning in and everybody in the community to get your tickets early so that you can come down and see it. It's gonna be a great event. Be on the Cowboy Channel, and the television is gonna be nationwide, and it's, we're drawing our contestant pool from that circuit finals. You know, basically that structure, so the stock contractors are coming from all over the country, and the contestants are the top two in each event from our 12 circuits in the United States and the Canadian circuit. We're pulling from all of those. Likewise, the television is going out nationally every performance, every night. So we expect to generate a lot of interest well beyond our area, which is unusual, less usual for us. We're mostly counting on all of our locals and a lot of tourists that do come in, but it's gonna be a hot ticket, so go online, grab those tickets early. And with that, without further ado, I'll turn it over to the Girl of the West and the mom of the Girl of the West, Corliss Palmer.
Hi, my name's Corliss Palmer, and I'm the director of the Girls of the West program. This is my 21st year as such, and it's a great opportunity for me and the girls. We have a great passion because since 1946, all of our proceeds have gone back to local military and their families. But I want to talk about our program. So the Girl of the West program started in 1922, and the original Girl of the West was Dawn Norris, and her original outfit is down in the Pioneer's Museum in the 150-year exhibit. And we, I had this brainchild that we should recreate that outfit, and so we have an amazing seamstress, and that's what she's done. So this outfit that Georgia has on is really the same as what the original Girl of the West wore in 1922. So 100 years later, it's kind of fun. The Girl of the West is a two-year summer commitment. First, they're chosen as the aide, and the first summer, and then she becomes the Girl of the West. And by the way, we do have an aide. She has an eye emergency, so she can't be here tonight. So that's really unfortunate because they make a pair that are dressed exactly alike. So they're judged, we have our competition during the rodeo on the Friday, and we choose the aide, and the competition consists of horsemanship, speech, interview, and appearance. So it's a pretty, it's a one-day competition, but it's pretty rigorous. And we have some posters and some, for the Street Breakfast and the rodeo, and some flyers out on the table, so please be, pick those up and pass them around town, if you would. We would appreciate it. Georgia Struminas is the 2022 Girl of the West. She's a 20-year-old daughter of George and Jenny of Larkspur. Since the age of 10, she's been competing in Western, English, ranchhorse, and Jim Con events. She also served for ambassador for another rodeo. She's currently a junior at the University of Colorado in Carda Springs studying communications, and her brother is currently in the US Army as a US Airborne Ranger, so she's really motivated to help the military. She rides a painhorse gilding named Rock. Please enjoy her half of the presentation.
Hi, my name is Georgia, and I am the Girl of the West. I serve as a proud ambassador for the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo, and I'm excited to tell you that the best in pro rodeo are coming to Carda Springs for the 81st Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo NFR Open, July 13th through the 16th, 2022, at the scenic Norris Penrose Event Center. The inaugural NFR Open will be one of the biggest rodeos of the 2022 pro rodeo season with $1 million in payouts. More than 200 contestants from each of the 12 US circuits, plus Canada, will be competing in bareback riding, steer wrestling, team roping, saddle bronc riding, tie-down roping, breakaway roping, barrel racing, and bull riding, with the semifinals and finals on Saturday evening, July 16th, where the national circuit champions will be crowned. Tickets for the 81st Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo are available online now at pikespeakerbus.org, and they're selling fast and sellouts are expected. The rodeo runs Wednesday, July 13th, through Saturday, July 16th, with evening performances at 6:45 PM, Wednesday through Saturday evenings, and a Saturday matinee at 12:15 PM. Discounts are available for kids 12 and under, military, first responders, and groups of 20 or more. Our local military are honored at each performance. Fort Carson on Wednesday evening, first responders in missile defense on Thursday evening, Space Night on Friday evening, the United States Air Force Academy at the Saturday Matinee, and NORAD US NORTHCOM on Saturday evening. The Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo has proudly been supporting local military and their families since 1946. All of the performances will start with the Pike Speaker Range Rider Pivots and the Pike's Peak Rangerettes Drill Teams, followed by the Fort Carson Mounted Color Guard, then it's top rodeo action. Plus, there's fan favorite mutton bustin'. Everybody loves to watch these fierce kiddos give it their all in hopes of winning a trophy and a medal. After the rodeo, stick around for autographs from the contestants, the Rangerettes, and the Girls of the West. That's me! Then head on over to the Coors Road House Saloon for live music, dancing, and a frosty Coors. I'm counting on each of you being at this year's rodeo. The dates again are Wednesday, July 13th, through Saturday, July 16th. Save time by purchasing your tickets online. You can find all of this information and much more about our rodeo at our website, pikespeakerbus.org. So get ready for the best in professional rodeo at the 81st Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo NFR Open, July 13th through the 16th, at the Norris Penrose Event Center in Carda Springs. See you there!
Thank you. Chief, don't we have a Girl of the West on our staff?
Yes.
And she is one of our police officers, so...
I thought you were gonna say it was Debbie.
All right, that... That takes us to item 5B, TriLakes Cares. Ms. Chapin. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna start off by saying I'm a little intimidated on following that presentation. I don't know that I have my stuff memorized as well as she did, so... Thank you for having me come this evening to present. My name is Haley Chapin. I serve as the executive director of TriLakes Cares, where the local community resource center in Monument, providing health and human service products and services to the local community in northern El Paso County. Try to get to speak maybe once a year or so and give you guys an update on what's going on. I have taken the last two years off due to COVID, so hopefully that's a good opportunity to come back and kind of share the message of TriLakes Cares and all that we offer to the community members. So our main focus, our mission of our organization is to improve people's lives through emergency self-sufficiency and relief programs. So you'll see, we have some stats of our local region compared to the US. Sometimes we find that our local community and the stats from our local community are a little bit different from the nation at large. So a little bit of information about the food insecurity in our community, our housing, compared to the nationwide numbers as well. Our local community has unique needs, and we do our best to make sure that we're reflective of those needs. And so sometimes the products and services that we offer to the community may change, as well as the income threshold for eligibility. We all know that the cost of living in northern El Paso County is a little bit higher than some other parts of the region, and so we'd like to make sure that our products, our services, our income eligibility, and everything about our organization are reflective of the local community that we serve. So to put it in perspective, here on this chart, you can see what the federal poverty income guideline is by household size. Now, look at your household size and figure out where you would fall as a household of one making $13,590, and tell me you could afford to live in our local community. So what we did was we took the five zip codes that we serve. We took the area and median income, and then we went 50% below that. So if you think about it, the bottom quarter of the income that's relative to our local community, and we came up with the next slide, which has the household income for our local community. So you could see the difference for a household size of one from $14,000 to basically $48,000. I will tell you that the closer the households get to this income guideline, usually the less services they seek or they don't seek services. We still have a much lower level of income for the average household that we serve, but we do go up to these thresholds. Now, when we offer services to these different households at this income level, if they are over income, all the people within the household and their combined income are over this income guideline, or if they live just outside of our immediate service territory in northern El Paso County, so basically county-lined road on the north side, Mount Herman on the west side, out like Meridian-ish on the east side, and Interquest-ish on the south side. That's kind of the territory we serve. So if you are either over income but in our territory, or within income but outside of the territory, we will actually still be able to serve you with certain products and services, but not maybe others. For instance, if we have county funding, you have to live within the county. If we have income funding that's based off of income size, you have to be a certain income or less. But we will never turn anyone away. Someone comes to us for food, and they are food insecure, or they are hungry, or they are needing medical attention, we will make sure that they are served with their immediate needs. But we are within constraints of being able to serve financially based on where our funding comes from, from those sources, so... So we focus on those five zip codes in northern El Paso County, but we have two different types of clients that seek our services. The first is generational poverty, and the second is situational poverty. And clients who come from each of those categories, we have to work with very differently. We can't have the same expectation of someone who is in middle class, has a nice working job, has been impacted by COVID, they have lost their income, or they are separated from their spouse, whatever the case might be, and they are thrust into situational poverty and needing support. And then there are certain clients who come to us where their household, or in the previous household, or their parents, or their grandparents, and their kids have been on the system and needing services throughout the system. And so we have to work with clients very differently based on where they come from. So the case managers interview our clients. They find out kind of where they fit. We assess the situation based on what their needs are, and then we determine a course of action to move forward based on all of those different things. I will tell you that no two clients are the same. Either they have electricity, or they don't, or they have a home, or they don't, or they have children, or they don't, or they have any other partner living in their home, or they're a single senior. They have different incomes. They come from different types of poverty. And so the cases that we deal with are very complex, and our staff are trained to be able to determine the situation and find the right course of action to move forward. Some people, their plan out of poverty involves a GED. Some people already have that. Some people, their plan out of poverty involves a better source of income, or even getting a job, or even getting childcare so that they can then go get a job. And so it looks different for every client we serve. There are hidden rules that are within poverty, and I have a couple slides to share with you, kind of what I'm talking about with that. In middle class, or in poverty, middle class, and wealth, time is looked at very differently. And here's an example of how our case managers have to work with the clients we serve. And people in poverty are in the moment, in the present, in the tyranny of the moment. And sometimes they come in and they need rent paid, or they have their electricity turned off, and that is what their focus is. If you are unable to afford to turn your electricity back on or keep it from being disconnected, there's also a lot of other things we need to address because the next bill that comes in, robbing Peter to pay Paul, or just paying the next one that's due, our case managers will have to work with them. So here's a concept of time and how it's looked at differently three times. The next one is money. We often hear about this a lot in poverty, is they don't, people don't have enough money to make ends meet. Well, in poverty, it's spent right away. It's paying the next bill to keep it from disconnect. In middle class, we manage it a little bit better. We might create budgets for ourselves. And in wealth, it's conserved or invested, and sometimes we dabble a little bit back and forth between different lines. But it's hard to ask someone who's coming from the mindset of poverty to say something like, you should have a budget, or you should be conserving, or saving, or not spending, when the mindset from someone who comes from generational poverty is different than the mindset of someone who's coming from middle class and thrust into situational poverty. Another one is food. That's one of the big things we're known for in our organization, is having the local food pantry. And so in poverty, the question is, did you have enough? In middle class, we might ask the questions, did you like it? And in wealth, was it fancy enough? Was it presented fancy? You don't get a very fancy-presented Big Mac at McDonald's. But when you go to a restaurant where the prices are a little bit more, where you find people from the wealth category going into those restaurants, it'll be, there'll be emphasis on how the food was presented. Clothing. Sometimes we see people from poverty making a decision to buy brand-name clothing because they want to fit in. We have some clients who actually have jobs in a wealth mindset type of establishment at a law office. There's gonna be a certain expectation of how you're dressed when you go into a law office compared to another blue-collar job. And so sometimes we find people make decisions to buy different clothing, and we say, well, why are you spending money on brand name? And I don't even spend money on brand name. Sometimes we make those judgment calls. But here's another example about how the hidden rules lie under a concept of something like clothing. I talked earlier about living in the moment, in the tyranny of the moment, and this was a depiction of a client, and we interviewed them and said, how do you decide what to do with all these different bills and robbing Peter to pay Paul? And they said, all the balloons are barely floating, and whichever one falls down first is the one I take care of. And that kind of stuck with me, and it says, like, you're just waiting? You're just here waiting to see what happens next? And you don't have the ability to be proactive and think-forward thinking. And living in the moment is a scary place to be for a lot of people. So when we can pair up our clients with case managers and they can work through these processes, we have more success in getting people to move out of poverty and a better life for them and their family. Program areas of some of the things we do, there's a lot that we do. These are just some of the examples of products and services that we offer. Basically, if a client comes to us and they have a special need, and it relates to either what we refer to as ESR, emergency self-sufficiency relief, if it can fall in one of those categories, we'll probably do it. I'll never forget, one of my first cases, when I joined TriLakes Cares 12 years ago, there was a single mother who left an abusive situation, and she had her kids and needed to appear at a court in Texas. I forget for exactly what the reason was, but she needed to be there so that she could present the paperwork and win her case and keep her kids safe and out of that abusive relationship with her spouse, ex-spouse. And he emptied the bank account, and she had nothing. And being that we are our own nonprofit and our own agency, and we're not Department of Human Services, our hands are not as tied as much. And I picked up the phone, and I called one of our board members who does a lot of traveling, and I said, hey, John, do you got any miles I could use? And we used his miles. We got her a plane ticket, and she showed up for that court appearance. We helped her arrange childcare for her kids back here. She won her case, and we were able to help move her to a successful space for her and her kids. And nowhere on there does it say plane tickets, and probably wouldn't do that again. But that's just the, gives you an example of about how TriLakes Cares works outside the box. We are not very traditional. We want to meet the client where they are, whatever their situation of need is, and be as creative as possible to help them move forward in whatever way that looks like. Many people don't know us as a food pantry, and then that's about it. But we do have a medical clinic with the collaboration of Penrose St. Francis. We have a nurse on staff and a volunteer doc, and actually, the nurse is on Penrose's staff, not on our payroll. Penrose actually pays for the nurse to be housed in our building and provide medical care to the community. So if town of Monument had a staff member who wasn't participating eligible for the health insurance, or even if you have health insurance, but you have co-pays to use it, sometimes you have it, and it's just too expensive to use it. Anybody from the community can come see our doc for free. And once that doctor maybe writes a prescription for you, then if you are wanting financial assistance to help pay for that prescription, you have to be income-eligible once you turn over to financial assistance payments with us. So, but anybody can see the doc, and that's a really neat thing. I don't think a lot of people know that we have a free medical clinic in our community to do that, so... Happy for our collaboration with Penrose. Getting Ahead is a self-sufficiency program, 12 to 15 weeks long, that works with what we call investigators who investigate, who are our clients. They investigate their current situation, their community situation. They help educate us on what other products and services might be needed in the community that we are not offering. And they investigate their past, present, and future story. Remember, again, when we went through the hidden rules, we talked about sometimes clients don't have a concept of time. They don't have the ability to plan for the future. Sometimes they can't see that there's a future. And so if we can provide them hope and planning and support to get them to plan for the future, then we're no longer robbing Peter to pay Paul. We have a plan. And so sometimes you just need someone to come alongside you and support that. We have a graduation coming up for Getting Ahead later in June. I believe I've sent an email out to each of you, I'll catch up with you, Redman, for an invite to the Getting Ahead program graduation. I'll catch up with you, Redmond, for an invite to the Getting Ahead program graduation. That is the one portion of the program where we can invite outsiders in to hear about the investigators that have gone through the program and learn a little bit more about how we actually move the needle on self-sufficiency in our community. We invite grantors and funders that have funded the program. We invite grantors and funders who have denied us funding for the program. We invite community members like you so that you can see what it's like in our community to go through that self-sufficiency program. But that's just one of our many efforts around the self-sufficiency space. Food programs, which is what we're known for the most, although it doesn't look like this now because you may or may not know we're under construction in the front of our building. The Help Yourself Market is, I think, what is the most popular program that we offer, where clients get to come into the, into our building and literally help themselves. They get to choose what bread they want from the rack, what carton of eggs, what, what brand of milk. And there's dignity in the ability to self-choose rather than coming and just getting a bag handed to you. And so we're excited that hopefully later in June, we will be able to reopen after construction is done to let clients come back into the building and shop on their own. And we'll have a little celebration. Maybe we'll do a ribbon cutting with the chamber and invite everybody to come in and kind of take a look at the changes that we've made and celebrate our successes. But we offer a variety of different ways that the community can access food, whether you're on food stamps or not. Sometimes if you are just a little bit over the income threshold of food stamps and you're no longer eligible for food assistance, but you still need help and support. Because don't forget that threshold for food stamps or TANF or disability, it is the same eligibility whether you live in Lyman or Manhattan. And the cost of living between those two different places is starkly different. And living in Northern El Paso County where the cost of living is a little bit higher, the average household income is higher, we find that community members are struggling with a higher wage to still survive. And so the Help Yourself Market is open to anybody who needs it. You don't have to necessarily live within our service territory or have a certain incomer or not. So anybody in this room is eligible to come through the market. You just have to come through, sign up to be a client so we can have record of where the food is going. Couple of reasons why people actually leave poverty. You know, they say have these statistics out there where they talk about the average person who tries to quit smoking takes seven times or the average person who tries to leave a domestic violence situation takes eight attempts to actually leave. Same thing with poverty. Sometimes there are several different steps that you have to have in place. And the first step, you get right over that threshold. You lose your food stamp benefits. You lose your disability benefits or your Medicaid or Medicare or whatever the benefit is. And then you need a little extra support. And so we want to come alongside and be that, fill that gap to help people actually make that move up and out. Partnerships, some of those are our big community partners. Care and Share is the food bank of the Southern Colorado. Here's a piece of trivia for you. If you didn't know, the difference between a food bank and a food pantry. Care and Share is a food bank. They supply food to the agencies. TriLakes Cares is food pantry. We supply food to the people. So Care and Share obviously helps us a lot with getting the product we need in our doors so that we can then get it back out to the community. Penrose St. Francis with the medical clinic and so on and so forth. One of our clients who came through, this is a quote from one of their recent services that they've had. And so I thought I would just share with you. It's really nice to be able to have the opportunity to hear from those that we serve. And happy to be able to present that with you in just a moment. Next slide. Some impacts and outputs that we have for our fiscal year that just ended. Give you some ideas of the community that we're serving and the, the different breakdown in demographics of, of how we serve those. Some clients utilize our services for years on end because they're a single senior on a fixed income and they will need our services for the rest of time. And then we have some that are thrust into situational poverty. They need our support while they don't have a job and they get back on their feet and then they no longer need our services. So some people need us for the rest of their life and some people need us for a month or two at a time. Just as important as the impacts and the outputs are the outcomes. If you're ever donating to an organization and you want to know how they're moving the needle to actually make a change and a difference, you want to make sure you ask them about their outcomes for their programs and services that they offer. I could tell you that we served 100 people, but does that matter if they're all coming back every day after day after day? Or are we actually moving and we're seeing some change in behavior of the clients we serve? Or we're seeing some decrease in the cost of fundraising associated with the way that we operate? This slide is a new slide to kind of show the impacts of the last couple of years of COVID. So the first, on both charts, the bar chart on the left shows you what a pre-COVID year looked like. So not having any COVID impact and our, our threshold for the value of services we provided. And then the middle one shows half a year worth of COVID impact. So we have a disruption of services. We had a lot of clients go into hiding. They weren't really sure if we were open. They didn't want to come out to get services. So everyone kind of curled into their turtle shell. And then the third chart or the third bar chart shows you last fiscal year. That shows you a full year's worth of impact on COVID. Our fiscal year runs October through September. So the first, the middle chart only had a couple of months' worth of COVID impact in the services that we provided. So you can see that increase. Luckily, the community has been very supportive of our increased need and our community's increased need. And we've been able to keep up our fundraising efforts in line with the need that you see here. But that's pretty a stark increase in need for our community. And so we're happy to be able to be here to support it. We do a lot with a little. One of the bigs, one of the big things I like to talk about is how much we can do with donated goods and services versus cash. And what do we do with, how much food do we get donated versus purchase? So those are a little bit of a depiction of how well we are good stewards of the products and services that we get donated and the dollars that we get donated. Next slide. Volunteers make it happen for us. They do a lot. They answer the door on the phone. They actually provide services. They pack bags. They help with the backpack bash that goes out into the community. On the left, you'll see them servicing a car. We work with a local repair shop and provide oil changes to our clients. And that's a proactive service that a lot of us take for granted. When our little thing displays, we just go and get an oil change. But for clients who are struggling to make ends meet, they don't really have that ability to just kind of go and do those proactive things and spend money on that. So to partner with community businesses and churches to make those things happen are key. And there's my contact information at the end. I'd like to, before I take any questions, if there are any, I'd like to take a moment and invite Barb up with me so that she can share a little bit about her experiences. Barb is a recipient of our services and has agreed to come and share a little bit about her experiences with TLC. I could stand up here all day long and tell you all the great things about what we do. But when it comes from somebody who's actually been a recipient, it has a different level of meaning. And so, so I'll let you adjust the microphone.
Hello, my name is Barb Sheen and I am a client of TLC. I'll tell you, as a senior, I don't know what I'd do without them. Several months ago, I had a broken pipe in my mobile home of which I was pulling chronically. I did not know where to go. I did not know what to do. I picked up the phone and said, hey, I got a busted pipe. Can you guys help me? And guess what? They did. But that's one of the many services. They've helped me with my car with tires. I mean, it's trivial to other people, but to us seniors, it's devastating. They have to go to somebody and ask for help. But they make it so easy and so helpful. I call them my guardian angels, which they are. They've helped me with medical. They've helped me with Sandy Marie's, my dog, okay? And recently she ate a box of chocolates. Do you know what, that those are nowadays, right? So I called and they helped me pay my lot rent so I could take my dog into the vet. And she's my best friend. What would I do without her? What would I do without them? You just, I just want you guys to understand and know it's so hard on seniors, but now it's not. Because now we've got a phone that we can pick up and say, hey, we need you. And they're there, food, medical. I don't know where else to start. It's just they are there and thank God for that.
There are many products and services that we offer from putting gifts under the tree and making sure that someone takes care of our seniors to making sure that they don't have to make the decision about if they, if they only have enough food to feed one mouth, we have some folks who will feed their animal over feeding themselves because their animal's companionship to them. And that helps them get through it, helps keep their blood pressure low, many other things. And we don't want any of our community members making a decision about not being able to afford food for them or their animal. We actually work with Colorado Pet Pantry to get a whole bunch of donated pet food so that people who have pets and still are struggling to get by can come to us and order pet food from the market. And so again, it's not listed up there in the many products and services we offer, but it is something we have. I hear stories about people who need feminine hygiene products and that is not covered under food stamps. Where are they going to go? How are they going to afford that? So we want to make those decisions that we take for granted probably every day and make them a little bit easier for our community members to live their life here. So, any questions?
Questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. TriLakes Cares always appreciates the support from the Town of Monument, whether it's a request to have the potholes in the back repaired in the alley or having common serving in our Client Appreciation Day and having presence at those events. Or even the financial support that you've given us in the past really goes to help community members like Barb. And so we're grateful for the partnership that we have with the Town of Monument and all that you guys continue to do. So thank you very much. One last plug for the Taste of TriLakes Cares. It'll be this Wednesday. Tickets are still available on our website, but we'll probably close them tomorrow evening. And a fundraising event for us that has also taken a two-year hiatus due to COVID. We're happy to bring that back. So if you're not doing anything Wednesday evening, we would love for you to join us at that event. And, and then I will, as you guys continue the meeting, I'll be by to drop off a little bag of information for each of you in a token of our appreciation. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we get to item 5C, Ms. Vandenhook, is this, does this presentation require discussion from the board and direction?
It's really just background information as to the Monument Lake permits. I, what you guys choose to do with it is completely up to you. So I'm not asking for a decision, but I think we would like to know kind of the next steps after the presentation.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so like I said, this is really just a presentation to kind of give you some information about our lake use permits at Monument Lake. So just a little information, our lake is a public lake. It is approximately 31 acres, but there is limited shore access. So only about 750 feet on the shoreline there. It is a municipal water source. And some of the activities that are enjoyed at the lake are fishing, paddle boarding, kayaking. And we do allow battery powered motor boats at the lake as well. In 2017 to 2021, we did allow lake use permits. So we allowed commercial activities on our lake through those permits. The applications were opened on January 1st and the first two businesses that applied were given permits. If anyone applied during the year, they were turned down just because we had crowding and parking issues. There wasn't usually a lot of other businesses that applied for those permits up until 2021. The cost of those was a $75 business license and a $250 permit fee. In fall of 2021, kind of after our land use code was reviewed, we discovered there was a conflict within our code authorizing, not, that would be in conflict if we were to authorize the lake use permits with and mobile vendor permits. We also had an increase in the number of businesses that wanted to apply for the permits. And we had a few arguments at the lake between businesses that did have permits and those that did not. So the decision was made to discontinue those lake use permits so we could evaluate the situation and if there were other solutions. So just as some examples of parking at Monument Lake with the new housing that's there and the increased use from, from people all over, not just in Monument and Palmer Lake and the TriLakes area. We know people from Denver, Colorado Springs do come and enjoy our lake. So while we really enjoy that, it does cause some problems at our lake because of the small shoreline and the limited parking access that we have. This is just kind of an overview from our code of what the rules are. So on item number C, it says that we should also have, a mobile vendor needs a temporary use permit. And mobile vendor permits, other, in another place in our code, we're not, we do not allow mobile vendors to operate on public property. So that's where that conflict came in. So we were allowing business licenses on public property, but really that was in conflict with our code. And that was one of the reasons we stopped allowing those lake use permits. So we, we have a, we need to keep balance within the public use and business use of this amenity in our community. We have seen an increased user, visitors at the lake. There is the development that Lake of the Rockies next to the lake. We have tried to make some improvements there with, we added a fishing dock, a boat ramp. We've improved the parking and we added the overflow parking on Mitchell Avenue. We do have some complaints throughout the year between anglers and other watercraft users. And while businesses do attract more people to our community and they're coming to town and, you know, hopefully shopping in our stores and therefore generating sales tax to increase our revenue, they're not always do that, not always doing that. And there is the impact that more users are providing more impact on our lake and we're not able to keep up with that, with the parking, parking spaces. So the three options that, that I believe that we have to go forward with these lake use permits are to reinstate the permits at their current rate. You know, as long as they meet the requirements, we would be able to approve all of them. Or we would have a lottery system that would only allow a certain number of permits. Both of those would require a modification to the code that would allow mobile vendors to operate on public property. Another option would be to ask those businesses to submit a proposal to us that we could then see if that proposal minimizes impact while increases the benefit that we would have at the lake. We would need to figure out a selection process for that. That could be staff led or that could be board led. But again, we would need to make that modification within our code to allow for those mobile vendors. Or a third option might be to just eliminate the lake use permits entirely and not allow businesses to operate at the lake. And that is really kind of the overview of our lake use permits. Happy to answer any questions or other concerns that you might have.
Okay, question, as far as, you know, over the past couple of years, the lake has been very popular and parking has been an issue. Have we seen, and a lot of that was Have we seen, and a lot of that was due to COVID. Have we seen any of that subside?
Not to my knowledge, no. We still see, I was down there a couple of weeks ago, so even before summertime on a weekday and there was hardly any parking spots left.
Okay. Uh, other questions from the board?
Do we have a number of how many businesses applied in 2021? I know you said two was what was getting approved prior to that.
We had the two businesses that we approved earlier and then later that summer, we had two other businesses come and ask if they could apply for it. But because we only allowed two per year, we turned them down.
You mentioned the overcrowding and the negative impact, uh, here. Can you quantify the negative impact other than just the frustration? Maybe there's more, uh, maybe there's more calls for the police dealing with people that are arguing or, you know, what is the, you know? I guess I'm trying to get my, uh, handle on what the negative impact is other than overcrowding.
I, I don't have any other information other than what we just see at the lake with, um, people not having enough places to park. We hear sometimes that there's people kind of blowing up their water crafts or there's a lot of activity on the road instead of at the boat ramp or on the shore. And so it's kind of a safety issue, but I don't have any quantifiable information on that for you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, since we have denied the permits to the businesses, that hasn't changed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would be interested to see how the board, how my fellow board members would feel about, uh, option two combined with sub option one and two, uh, requesting proposals from businesses who would like to have a permit and choose based on their proposal. I think that gives the board the opportunity, allows for the board to have staff guidance in what they're seeing and the board to have a say in, in what is being approved and not approved.
Mayor Wilson, I'd like to know what would be the criteria as far as the selection for when a business submits a proposal?
Well, I, I think that's what the, that option is leading to is that proposal, we would look at it, staff would look at it and decide if it was, uh, I guess there wouldn't be a formal, um, just drew a blank here. There wouldn't be formal guidelines.
I understand. So I'm wondering, um, how we would, uh, conduct the decision-making?
I think that would be based on how, how the business affects the current popularity and use of the lake.
I think that's put us in a potentially difficult position because as we've seen in this presentation tonight, it's really difficult to quantify a lot of these issues. And I would be more prone to, uh, protecting that lake as an amenity for residents and I would be more comfortable with option three.
Okay. Uh, any other board feedback?
I'm not, can you put the options back up that were there? Thank you. Uh, I'm not entirely comfortable with the idea of picking winners and losers. Unless we had a set criteria on what we were going to be reviewing. I'm not opposed to a lottery system. That way businesses have an equal opportunity to be selected year over year, but I'm definitely not for eliminating the, the use of the lake or restricting it to just residents of Monument.
It would be, I mean, anyone can still come at, come to use the lake. This would just be about allowing businesses to have lake use permits.
No, I understand. I just, I'm not, I'm not looking for us to be picking who the winner or loser is. I would rather there be a lottery.
No, I understand. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Well, I don't, I don't think this would be, um, picking winners and losers. I think it would be picking the businesses that is appropriate. If there's a business that can thrive at 6:00 AM when there's nobody at the lake versus a business that is going to, um, take up space and time during high points or peak hours, one might be more appropriate than the other.
Would Mr. Rivera, would that ever potentially open us up to legal issues if we were to say this business is more appropriate for using the public land than this business?
What I understand the mechanism to be is basically granting a permit. And, um, I, I think that the board was, has the authority to establish, um, the, with an ordinance or whatever mechanism is appropriate, establish the, um, what the permit looks like and the criteria for selection. So, so long as, I, what I'm hearing is so long as there is, um, there's some interest in the board of, of setting forth criteria and a permitting process. And certainly that's within your realm and within your authority.
We would need to create clear criteria if we move for something more like option two.
Trustee Shaining, you're breaking up a little. Can you repeat that?
So we would need to create clear criteria if we were moving towards an option more like number two, that is what we're getting at.
Did anybody get that? You're, we're still losing your audio.
Okay. So we, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we would, I guess what it sounds like is if we went with option two, we would need to create clear criteria then.
That would be, yeah, we could do that.
I would agree with that.
I have a question. Have we been able to quantify peak use? Is, is it consistent throughout the whole day or is there like noon hour or a particular time?
No, I haven't. I haven't been able to figure out what that is. I would say probably during the summertime or weekends for sure. You can kind of see based on the parking, but I, we haven't done like any official measurement of that down there.
Okay.
So I think to, um, trustee Stevens' question, we have people down there all the time. Why are, why do we not have this information? And if we move forward with one of these options, would we get that information? Because I know the police department probably patrols there several times a day. Parks is out there several times a day. So wouldn't we know? You know, kind of what this looks like? I know, I know you, you're new to this area or this, addressing this, but we should have that information.
Yeah, we can certainly get that for you.
Maybe I could ask the same question a different way from, from the chief. Do you get, uh, is there a peak time when you get calls of complaints and, you know, I don't know, fights or arguments or things going on?
So trustee Stevens, we see the, probably the, the greatest population, I would say Saturdays and Sundays and holidays. Ten to four, uh, typically. Uh, we get probably, based on my memory only, but, but, you know, tracking a couple of, um, very engaged residents in the area, um, we got most of our complaints probably, um, I'd say before four, 4:00 PM, Mike? Yeah, I, I think that'd be really safe to say. I'd say, I'd say on average, probably afternoon and probably before, uh, 4:00 PM. A lot of it was balancing the two worlds, new development versus the lake always being there, people, you know, having the right to use it. So a lot of the complaints weren't founded, um, whether it was alcohol or loud music. We, um, more than, um, more often times than not, we would, um, we'd go down there and it was consistent with the usage of the property. You know, there would be music or there would be, um, people drinking, not, not necessarily alcohol. So we didn't really see too much, uh, through design, um, the boulders, um, us working very closely with Public Works. We were able to eliminate most of the parking complaints, uh, just with the boulders and through design. So that's really, I think that's dropped off at least 80 to 85%. Mike, if we had to give you a stab in the dark there. I can tell you the one, the one concern that we, you know, see the most right now is probably congestion at the boat ramp area. You know, if somebody temporarily parks or if somebody, um, um, you know, double parks or something like that, um, then we'll see that. Uh, we, we, we almost always get on that right away, uh, because where you make that loop at the, I guess that'd be the south end by the dam. Yeah, where you make that loop down by the south end, you typically only have enough room for a fire truck to, to make that loop. That's how we designed it with the, uh, with the fire marshal. You know, so we, we, we keep that clear. Uh, one of the, one of the, um, the purposes for us adding, uh, two PSAs instead of one code enforcement officer was so that we could extend coverage onto those Saturdays and Sundays that we saw heavy complaints this year. So when you go back to the original tent of, uh, just abolishing the, the code enforcement officer and merging it with two police service aides, that is to expand the coverage just for that reason. So I hope I gave you a little bit of a picture. Good.
Mr. Sheffield, didn't we not have plans at one time to expand, uh, our visitors' ability to move around the lake? Or are we going to do a continued, um, path that was supposed to kind of be like the dock we currently have, but a, but along the north end?
Certainly, yes. That's still a, a discussion item with us that we, um, we've talked about putting a, for lack of a better term, a dock across the bay on the north end to give people access to that north and west side pedestrian.
Right. Not a
Madeline's applied for a grant for just that, uh, dock to go from the, uh, east side of the lake to the west side of the lake.
I don't think that would help with parking, but it would definitely help with the concentration of, um, visitors in certain areas.
Yeah, the, the proposal was that we would start from the east side of the lake and, um, it would go over to the next shore. So then it would create more areas for anglers to be. And then the, um, dock itself has some little platforms off to the side. So there would be more room for anglers to be there.
Okay. If there are no further comments from the board, I will, um, just have staff take what they've heard tonight and work from there instead of giving, uh, any specific direction from the board.
Here's what I'm looking for, Mayor. Just a little bit of direction from the board that would, do you want us to select some criteria for you to choose, uh, from option two? Uh, and then if we do that, we're going to have to change the ordinance to allow mobile, mobile vendors on public space. So do you want us to do both of those?
I think we need more data. And I, yeah, I, we need to revisit this.
Okay.
Okay. So gather more data and come back to the board at a future date. Into summer, two months, one month?
I'd say one month.
One month.
And like I mentioned earlier, with what we've discussed here tonight, I would address those, um, items broad, you know, broadly. And work from there. Is the board in agreements with that?
Are we looking at the June 20th and beings? We're skipping the sixth. Okay.
Thank you, Matt Madeline.
And then July, we're meeting on Tuesday, the fifth, correct? After the holiday?
Okay. Okay, that takes us to resolutions. Item six, A, resolution number 38, 2022, uh, resolution approving a contract with Martin Marietta. Mr. Sheffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board of trustees, uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Steve Sheffield. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director. I'm your victim tonight since Tom Tharnish is on vacation. So, um, the first resolution I have is, uh, 38 dash 2022. This is, uh, we're asking for approval, uh, to get into a contract with Martin Marietta to do some of our asphalt overlay projects that we have planned. The priorities this year, I'm glad Haley mentioned it, but the, uh, the alley there is, is one of the, um, projects that we intend to tackle this year. There are some drainage issues in there. Uh, potholes get bad. Traffic is pretty heavy back there. So we intend to do some drainage work in there, also overlay it with asphalt. Uh, the other projects are the south end of Mitchell, um, specifically south of Arnold towards the waste plant down there. That road is in really bad shape. Again, it's, uh, Tom and I worked with Tom Martinez, uh, to formulate a rolling five year plan on, uh, on these roads, which is, which ones are priority, I guess. And then, uh, the last project is, uh, Washington Street between second and third. Again, just an old road, not very much there. Want to mill that out and redo it. So, uh, take any questions.
Okay, thank you. It says the amount is budgeted in the 2022 Capital Projects Fund. What was, what was our total amount budgeted for, um, paving?
So I don't have that number in front of me, but what I can tell you is we'll be coming back for more. We're going to do chip ceiling will be the next thing that we bring for you. So there was plenty in that to cover this under 18,000. Uh, but I don't have that number. I could get that to you.
Okay. And then just a question about the, the current times. And I know I've mentioned this, but are we getting to a point to where asphalt is becoming competitively priced with, uh, concrete?
I don't know the answer to that question either.
Okay.
What I can tell you is that Martin Marietta won't go any more than a month with us to lock in a price because prices are changing so fast still.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, if we have none, I'll look for a motion.
I think a motion to approve resolution 38 dash 2022, resolution approving a contract with Martin Marietta for the 2022 capital paving projects.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Trustee Shaining?
Her mic, she's texted me that her
Okay. I can, I can do it now. Sorry. It was, someone fixed it. Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Potom Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. A motion passed seven zero. Resolution number 39, 2022, uh, resolution approving amendment two. Mr. Sheffield.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is a, an amendment to the current contract with Forest Grin Associates. As most of you are well aware, we've been trying to build a second water, uh, storage tank to the west of town for several years now. We initially ran into a litigation issue with the neighborhood up there. Then we hit COVID. So it's just been an ongoing, um, challenge, I'll just say. So with that challenge comes some extra costs, uh, some extra engineering was needed. We have five miles of pipeline. Again, the two million gallon tank landscaping, we dealt with, um, some land acquisition issues, the railroad, uh, numerous things like that, that just contributed to some cost over, overruns on this. We have, the money is in the water bonds that we, we took out. We have the money available. We have, the money is in the water bonds that we, we took out. We have the money available. Guess, uh, I would take any questions.
Okay. It says. The three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Thousand is budgeted. And then it goes on to say the new contract amount, but that amount includes both the current contract. Amount and the additional amount. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so there's, there's already been. Just a second, will I look at a six hundred and some odd. Six hundred and twelve thousand is the current contract. This amendment is the additional three hundred and eighty-two for a total of nine hundred and ninety-four.
So you're saying the change was already budgeted for? It says three eighty-two is budgeted.
Budgeted is the wrong word.
Okay.
We have the funds available would probably be a more appropriate way to say that.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Yeah, it seems like we've had a number of amendments and changes, and I understand that prices are going up and different things like that, but. Maybe I don't understand the process. Is there not an initial quote or did we not do an initial engineering, uh, you know, contract to? Have them spec out what it would, uh, what it would cost and then. I guess I'm kind of at a loss at why we're keep coming back, and this isn't the first time we've had amendments or changes and. Addendums and things like that. I just feel like these projects are dragging on. And I would be more inclined to say, let's, uh, you know. Do we not get, did we not get an original quote or what am I missing here? Why is there? I understand that things didn't turn out the way we thought they were or something like that, but. I don't know, it's, it's getting a little frustrating. I feel like everybody keeps coming back and, and asking for, you know, more money. You know, and maybe I just not miss a understanding. Maybe you could clarify a bit here.
Sure, yeah, I, um. I, I would say we feel your frustration. There was an original contract amount for six hundred and twelve that we thought would cover it. Again, we ran into numerous issues that we didn't foresee when we started the project. Some of those land acquisition, there was surveying to be done that we hadn't anticipated with the railroad. The railroad actually. We initially designed this thing to cut across the railroad at a forty-five degree angle and the railroad came back and said, nope, it has to be at a ninety-degree angle. So it, it shifted where we wanted to place the water lines, things like that. What I can tell you is that we have been assured by Forsgren Associates that this should. Take us through the end of both building the pipeline and the water tank.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you and Forsgren.
Should isn't, should isn't a good word.
Yeah.
I don't like that word.
Can I add to that? So what is the land, I mean, the land we, we battled for, right? That the tank is going on went all the way to the state Supreme Court.
Yes, sir.
What additional land acquisition was not anticipated?
So we, uh, well, because there were so many, um, when we started this project, there were seven different options, I believe. For the water lines to feed and then come back from the tank. We didn't. I guess this option was one of them down here at the railroad trestle. We have a neighbor. That we have to cut across a very small corner of their property. That has been a pretty contentious, uh, process to get. Some agreement from them to move forward.
And trust, trustee LaKind will be discussing that tonight in an executive session.
Okay. I would like to. Go along with the point though, Forsgren needs to lock their price in and stop shifting. We need to dial this in because. To trustee Stevens' point, this is not the first or second time, I think, that you guys have come. Expanding the amount of money that this project's costing. And I know it's in the bonds. It was accounted for, but. Those bonds were limited to projects that you guys had already put on the books to show us what they were at the cost at those times. So what is gonna, what's gonna fall off now? What projects aren't we gonna get done due to cost? That have risen due to economic conditions and things like that.
That's a, that's an excellent question. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm prepared to answer that right now. We certainly have had those discussions. We, we recognize that. We are probably gonna have to cut some of the projects that we intended to do out. Um, in order to move forward specifically with this project, this. This project has. Taken us by surprise.
Thank you.
I, I think that, uh. For future contracts, there's gonna need to be some type of, uh. With all this upheaval, and I think that probably other. Not in municipalities, organizations do the same thing. There's gotta be some cap in the contract where we just can't be. Swinging in the wind with this, uh, period. And so what, I, I know why Tom left now and went to vacation left you here. He's a smart man. But, uh, we, we, we definitely need to, to discuss this further, um, about keeping these companies held to some kind of cap. Period, or we don't write the contract. Cause this can't keep.
Yeah, what's the point of a contract?
Would the board like to hear from Mr. Koger?
I have one other question though. If we were to delay voting for this resolution till we can get more information. On the other projects, what's our timeframe before this has to be approved at the current? Numbers that are here.
Good question.
Cause I would really like to hear what's gonna fall off the radar from the original bond request.
I don't, and you're asking us to vote in this before we hear about an executive session as well.
Right.
Hold on. Mr. Foreman, do you want to address the executive session part?
Yeah, so the executive session is about the land acquisition, okay? Doesn't have anything to do with this contract.
Who doesn't change the cost?
Not suggesting it does.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that there's an increase of costs.
Well, you did suggest it what was because you said we're hearing about this before we're hearing about.
Jim said that.
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
Projects that are gonna fall off the radar. Because the costs of have increased across all of the water projects, including this one. So before we vote on this, what's our timeline that we have to make a decision? For this particular request?
So because of, let me address that. Because of the nature of this project, I don't think it matters what else falls off.
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars isn't gonna affect what falls off the project list. The increase of this project from five million dollars to over ten point eight million dollars is what's gonna affect what falls off. So we explained the increase of this project, total project. In previous meetings, the reason why PVC's increased. The cost of the construction of the tanks increased, uh, over five million dollars. And so there's nothing we can do about that. There's a lack of supply of PVC. There's a lack of contractors who build water tanks. And so we have to move forward with this project because we have no other options to store water in the town of Monument.
May I say one thing also? Just so all of you are aware, the, the existing water tank up on top of Beacon Light is in, uh, what I would call. Very rough shape. Part of the reason that we are pushing to do this project is that will allow us to take the existing tank offline. Have repairs. Actually, we're talking about putting a new tank up there, which I'm sure you all are aware of. It is in bad shape, and I'm afraid if we delay this project. We could have serious ramifications up the hill.
It, it, and it's been that way for a while, right?
It has been that way for a long time.
And I think that's because of the length of time this has taken is where all these cost changes are coming from. So would the board like to hear from Mr. Kroger?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kroger, will you come up, please?
I just wanted to note that the contract amount was established about a year and a half ago. And this is a very different project today than it was a year and a half ago. So there have been additional services we've, we've provided. There's been several, um, different routes that we've evaluated. And a lot of back and forth with the railroad. A lot of permitting, um, lots of extensive evaluations with, uh, with El Paso County. And it's just been, and then there's new, new segments of the water line that have been added. So it's, it's gone through a lot of changes in the last year and a half. But all changes that are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kroger. Mr. Foreman, the. So this is the second amendment to this project. Um, and but like the other board members have mentioned, there have been quite a few amendments and changes. And we understand that with the time. How many of these changes are being? Are the result of us asking for something different?
I would say several of them, uh, just like in this case, like, uh, Mr. Kroger, Kroger said. We had the option at one point last year to decide on whether or not we're gonna run a single line with a loop in it. Or a double line to where we could attach. If one line goes down. We can cross and have a cross connection between there and one line goes down, we can. Send the water up to another line, so we have water going both ways. We went with that option because it's more efficient for the town of Monument. That increased the cost the, by what, almost three million dollars, I think? So along with that, and he increased our engineering cost also at the same time. Because he had to re-engineer the project, so that is part of this cost.
So it sounds like in some of these cases, we need to figure out what we want before we. Get the cost.
Well, those were options that we gave to the board at the time, and we said we would look at these options and go with the best option. And we did, we, once we got engineering. Consult, consultation with us and we decided that the best, Tom and Steve and me and the engineer decided that. The best route to go would be a double line that we could connect together so that if one line, if we have a break in one line. It would allow us to switch the water over to the other line and we wouldn't have a loss of customer service.
Okay.
I feel your frustration. I, I really do. I, I understand. We are frustrated also. Rest assured, we're doing our best.
Yeah, and I, you know, I. You know, yes, I am frustrated in, in the, you know, that we're coming back again, but. I think the deaths, the, for those members that are relatively new, I think they're just a few of us that were back here a number of years ago. We've been tied up in litigation, so, uh, as you brought out earlier, uh, that, which took forever seems like and. Kudos to Mr. Rivera to get us through all of that, and I, uh, I appreciate all the hard work he did on that. And that got us to the point, and then we were in a stalemate on the board where, where it just seemed like half the board just didn't want to do anything. About the water system, so I think, uh, we're way past due. And, uh, I, uh, just out of curiosity, do you have a timeline as to when this will be done and we'll be able to? Move, we'll be able to switch over to the new tank?
Yes, we, uh, the, we, we expect them to start to mobilize on the tank site and begin construction of that. Anytime now, uh, the water lines themselves, so these are actually, it's two separate projects, but they're interconnected. The water line itself is out to bid right now, first part of June, we expect to hear. Bid results from that and award shortly thereafter.
Okay, so this will start the tank moving forward.
Both.
Both, so, but you said we still have a water line to approve. Right, that means that once the bid comes in, we have to authorize it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The key thing about this, uh, board is that we don't want to build a water tank without, without having the water lines. To serve the water tank. You don't want an empty water tank sitting on that hill in the wintertime. So we've got to have this water line to be able to serve that water tank. Right, and do we have an idea as to when all this will be done and functional?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we do, uh, end of this year, early next year.
Okay. And we think our current tank can make it through another winter? We have our fingers crossed. We've been talking about this, that, that water tank when I got here was. I think it's been a sore in the town's history for about seven years.
If not longer.
Yeah, if not longer.
If there are no other question, any other questions from the board?
Mayor Wilson, I, I don't have a question, but I do want to say that I've been on the board since twenty-fourteen. And I was there when, um, uh, trustee Stevens commented on the. Part of the board where, where we were divided and nothing moved forward as far as this board of the, um. Public Works and I. I just can't help but say we must move forward with supporting this because. There's been neglect for so long. And this is evidence of it.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution thirty-nine, twenty-two, a resolution approving amendment number two with Forsgren Associates. For both the new, uh, two MG tank project and the associated pipeline project.
Second.
Second.
We have motion, a second, Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Potom Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes seven-zero.
Tom owes you lunch.
Thank you all very much.
That takes us to resolution number forty, twenty-two. Resolution approving the revised, uh, revised town fees. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and trustees. This is a fee schedule update to include the site plan fee. It was slightly overlooked when we updated the fee schedule after the land development code was approved. This was part of the land development code fees. It's been in our development review applications. Since the code rewrite, and we just forgot to put it in the fee schedule, so we're asking to add the site plan fee. It's broken up by five acres or less or over five acres. And we're also asking for the second column from the school fee. District that was approved not that long ago to be omitted. It was confusing to people and it's not needed. The fee per unit total is that second column there, just to be omitted and. There was some language that was a little confusing that we fixed as well. So we're keeping the fee per unit for the step increase for July first, twenty-two, and we're keeping the fee. Per unit starting July first, twenty-four, as is, no numbers have changed. We just decided to take that column out, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the board?
Ju- just for brevity sake, i- if I recall, we had a discussion about this, uh, meeting or two ago, and this is just codifying it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Any other questions from the board?
So the only thing that's changed on this fee is what's marked in red?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number forty, twenty-two, a resolution approving revised town of Monument fee schedule. To add site plan fee and revise school fees.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Ms. Hogan?
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Potom Elliot?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes seven-zero. Item six D, resolution number forty-one, twenty-two. Authorizing the grant application. For the Department of Justice, Mr. Him, uh, Chief Hemingway.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. So this. Excuse me, this grant opportunity will, um. Will co- kind of coincide with the vision that we laid out during our, um, police portion of the workshop. When we met last time, one of the, um, well, a couple of the initiatives we wanted to do were. Crime analysis, but also we wanted to really do more community engagement. This, this, um. Kind of officer would work in our schools to kind of bridge the gap between the, um, community and the. The schools, especially the ones that don't necessarily sit right inside the town limits. So we've been working very closely with District Thirty-eight to kind of, um, to kind of get a visionary plan for what. A monument, uh, school resource officer would look like moving forward. It, it was agreed that they're very happy with the county deputies that are in there now. Because there's a tremendous bond between the, the students and, and those SROs. However, understanding that in many cases, we will be the responding agency to any type of, um. the responding agency to any type of, um, protracted situation. Um, and, and coupled with the fact that the majority of the kids um, are the students that either reside here in Monument or that we interact with frequently here in Monument. Um, they are more than amenable to us coming into the schools. Um, so we, when we looked at this grant, um, and we looked at that vision, you know, obviously we don't know when officers are going to retire or go on other assignments from the county. Uh, this grant would give us the platform to kind of, um, create an SRO position in the schools that sit in the, uh, in the jurisdiction now in Monument. But it also let us bridge a neighborhood resource officer, which would allow more community engagement such as, um, getting out with children, uh, in our, in our city, in our town now. Um, whether it's, um, sporting events, police explorers, um, citizens, police academy. Uh, and it's all in line. Excuse me, it's online with a vision that we outlined during the workshop. Uh, and we feel that we can apply for this grant because we're not supplanting our budget. We haven't actually budgeted for an SRO. We haven't actually budgeted for, and in our, uh, neighborhood resource officer. So a lot of the, 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 uh, vision and the, um, the concept, um, prior to going into 2F um, would be covered by this grant. I, I know the breakdown of the money is a little confusing. Um, they're looking to, um, we're looking to ask for $250,000, which would, um, which would help fund two officers over a three-year period of time. Um, the total match would be 62,500. Um, because each, um, each grant can't be more than 125,000. Um, that's why we asked for the two officers. Uh, we're not necessarily thinking we're going to get the grant. Um, A, this is great training for us to write other grants as we expand. But B, um, even if we get one of them, um, it would be a, it would be a, um, match. It would be a 25% match. So before we can enter into that grant application, um, we felt it best to come before the council, um, and say, hey, look, this is what we're trying to do. Um, because once the wheels are rolling, it would probably be difficult or possibly even affect us getting any grants moving forward. And we came after the fact and asked for permission for the matching funds. I know that was a lot. I apologize.
Questions from the board?
I have one, uh, and it was, I read, I read through the material. And it says that, uh, if you, let's assume you get the grant. Okay, uh, it says you have to maintain these officers for 12 months after the grant expires. So the grant money's gone, uh, you've done the, the two or three years, I forget what it is you mentioned with them. And then we maintain it for 12 more months. Is this something that you'd want to keep budgeted in at 100% full-fledged beyond that? And is that effective compared to where you'd want to use 2F money for maybe other officers or other equipment or whatever?
So the, a little again, a little bit convoluted. So yes, the answer is we wouldn't want to keep it beyond the 12 months. The goal is, is that we will be into those schools, uh, you know, through attrition. Um, you know, four years out from now, three years out from now. Um, the goal is that we will re-implement a full-time community resource officer and start doing more community engagement. Um, you know, so this was already kind of in the vision. It's just now here's a funding opportunity that we can, um, be proactive with because we haven't created a budget spot for those positions that were in that vision.
So you see this? Um, the, the matching funds you have within your budget?
Uh, yes, sir. That was already, again, you know, there was, the neighborhood resource officer was, was in the plan. So, um, you know, right, right now, you know, based on projected the sales tax, we don't know how many officers will be funded. We just know that the concept says that this will work. Um, and it's always, you know, going in the next budget workshop. It's the equipment adjustment compared to the human resource adjustment. So we, we feel it absolutely working and that is fundable.
And the 60, oh, sorry.
Okay.
And the $62,000 match, that is over the three-year period. So we're talking about $20,000 a year. Is that what you said?
Yeah, trustee Romanella, it would be, um, 20,833 a year.
So if, uh, if there is no annexation of these schools, um, then what happens for the funding?
So the grant will be written very broad. So the grant will say everywhere where, um, details, the job description of the officers, it'll talk about school resource and neighborhood resource. That's why we crafted it that way. So if it, uh, we didn't do a percentage of time for, in the schools versus in the neighborhoods. So we feel that either way, we would have, um, the ability to adjust the amount of time based on the availability of the annexation. Um, I've already met with the sheriff, so, um, he's okay with us going into the middle schools and high schools. When we talked to District 38, again, they're happy with their SROs. So that would be an attrition. So let's assume the, uh, one of the officers didn't leave or two of the officers didn't leave. We fall back in Bear Creek, Grace Best, um, uh, and possibly Monument Academy. We've been in, we've been in discussions with Monument Academy to, to go into their schools as well. Uh, once the grant would fall off, uh, to go back to trustee Romanella's question, um, then we have the ability to up the ante on the district or Monument Academy's contribution based on the amount of time they want to see the officer there. It'd be my philosophy to be on campus bell to bell though.
Can we see the grant itself or the application before we would vote whether we're comfortable moving forward with this? And the reason why I ask that, um, is because as I brought up with the previous grant for the police, I read through the whole, um, description and there's some language in there that I'm not comfortable with. Now, assuming that the town of Monument moves forward and writes the grant application without that language in there, that would be totally fine with me. But I do see hints at language, uh, terms such as preventing the radicalization of staff and things like that. And I wonder, um, would it be better for us to move forward with SROs that are funded through our own community? So that the federal government doesn't have these strings on this money? And that's why I would like to see the application.
So I, I believe it's available online. Um, I'm just going to defer to, uh, Ms. Romero on that because she's not allowed the research for us with the grant. So basically, Ms. Romero, um, indicates that she would, um, send a link to the grant. Um, and I, I think the part you're referring to is, um, some of the considerations for grant approval.
Correct.
You know, that doesn't, doesn't require staff to write the grant that way. So I think, um, you know, we're going to write a very, very much on what it's intended to be used for. Um, you know, if you're looking for some type of an accountability measure, um, we're not looking to, um, you know, make this political or go, you know, in one direction or the other. We're just looking to do community-based programs and, uh, school safety.
Yeah, and I understand that. It's just that the criteria, some of the criteria or the recommendations that are listed in the application. Um, I just wonder how much of an issue are some of those things in Monument? They don't seem relevant to me. So I just wouldn't want to put our police staff in a situation where the grant is written in such a way that they have to come back and answer questions such as, uh, you know, how are you preventing domestic terrorism in Monument? Some of those criteria were, uh, a little, they, they were politically out there, as you say. So I would just be more comfortable seeing this to make sure that that's not the direction that we're headed. But if you're assuring me that the grant would be written in such a way to exclude such language, then that's fine.
So in response to that, we're, we're, as a professional staff, just going to write the grant based on the needs of this community. You know, we, we understand the expectations of this community, um, like we do on every other decision we make daily. So we're going to, we're going to write the grant very specific to school safety and, um, community engagement programs. And if we're not awarded the grant, then, you know, so be it. But, you know, we're not looking to go into any rabbit holes on any of those specific, um, traits that they think may help you get awarded this grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 41-2022, a resolution authorizing the grant application for the Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program 2022.
Second.
We have a motion second, Ms. Hogan, we take role, please.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Shanning?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. That takes us to item 7A, discussion items, uh, well nine, Mr. Foreman.
As you know, we installed a radium removal system at well nine. Uh, this radium removal system requires a license from CDPHE for a radium removal process. This new license requires financial assurance as per section 3.9.5 of the regulations. In the new license information, the decommission plan will be submitted prior to the end of 2022. Um, along with this decommission plan, CDPHE requires have three requirements, either to pay cash or a wire transfer, provide a surety bond, or pass a financial test which involves auditors and additional financial documents. The required cash payment or wire transfer is $123,022. Um, that would satisfy the financial assurance portion requirement of the license uh, for CDPHE for a radium removal process. Um, we looked at all three processes, uh, the surety bond cost us about $1,200 a year, uh, for every year to pass a financial test, uh, that creates work with the state auditor's office, uh, which would require us to hire a consultant to, uh, pass that financial test and, and provide a lot of financial documents. Uh, at this time, we would like to get well nine turned on. We can't get well nine turned on without this financial assurance. Uh, we are prepared to, uh, wire 123,022 dollars tomorrow morning so that we can get well nine turned on by next Monday. Uh, this money is, will sit in the state's bank and will collect interest. Um, in the meantime, uh, we can start the financial test and work with the auditors to pass the financial test at which time they would refund our money.
Can you give a little additional background on this? This is, I believe, for the board, this is the first time we're hearing of this. What is it?
So when you put in a rad- a radium removal system, you create radioactive waste. And so a surety bond or an assurance bond for them is to ensure that we don't walk away from that radioactive waste. And so we don't decide one day, we don't need the radio. We, like you know, radium moves, it's a cloud underground, it can move. And we say, hmm, we don't need this anymore and we're just going to leave that waste out on Second Street. And so the $123,000 would pay for them to come and collect that waste.
Okay, so what happens with this money in the case that, like, like you said, radium travels? We may turn on that well next week and there's no radium for 10 years?
We would have to pass a lot of tests, uh, to ensure that we don't have radium in that well. And then at that time, we'd have to make a decision on whether or not we, um, decide to turn off our radium removal system based on the fact that we no longer have radium in that well. And then we would submit that to the state and then they would determine whether or not we got our money back.
What is a lot of tests? Because we do that quarter, we do that testing quarterly? And then if we're out of compliance, it's monthly, right?
Yes, we, we currently do do that testing every quarter. It's a state mandated thing that we have to do, uh, to be in compliance for this. I, I, um, I guess my professional opinion is that I, I don't see a scenario, like Mike said, where we decided that we don't have any more radium, we can just turn this off. I, I don't see that happening.
Right, right. So then why, why wasn't this in the budget?
We just found out about this. They just let us know when, Steve.
So I, um, Tom and Mike and I had a meeting with, uh, the gentleman's name is Tim from the CDPHE. And that was one of the frustrations that I voiced to him was we are completed with the project and you are just now telling us about this?
Right.
And the answer was like, yeah, we may have a little better communication for the next time. We, the town of Monument is the guinea pig on this sort of system. Um, my understanding, there's, there are 30 systems out there that are dealing with radium. We are the first to try and, and mitigate it this way.
So that's their excuse for not telling us before?
That, that was the communication breakdown was this is their first go at it also.
And.
We're hoping we'll have better representation at the state next year.
What are the other three wells doing in a different manner than?
Did I say that?
Um, I, they could be doing a range of things, uh, trustee Romanello, they could be blending their water, which we tried years ago. I don't know if you remember that. It lasted for a little while and then we saw the, um, I suppose there is, uh, some, some other products that you can use in your filtration system that grab this radium also. Uh, they're not as effective as, as the treatment that we chose. But there are, there are options out there.
What, what is the process on, let's say, like you said, you don't see this ending. What is the process of dealing with, uh, this filter and getting rid of the waste removal?
We have a contractor.
I'm sorry?
That we have a contractor that disposes of the radium?
They, they take it to my hometown in Texas.
You might have, you might have been out of town for that meeting.
Yeah, they, yeah, we, we actually made a presentation to the board and gave you options a couple of years ago, I believe, on which system you wanted to put in. Uh, the board chose to do this system and so we implemented the system. Uh, we, we have it ready to turn the switch on, uh, at any moment. We are just waiting for this license.
Okay.
So the contractor that set up this well, I was on the impression they were going to swap out the filters. And it was their responsibility to dispose of the, uh, radioactive, you know, filter, you know, the used radioactive filter. So now is this just something that's come up? I guess it's just now we finding out about it that we have to, uh, so it's not just the contractor that's responsible? We're somehow got to pay the? It's our well. It's our well. It's our well. We could hire another contractor next year. So we could, the, the state wants the surety with the town. Because we could hire another contractor in a year, two years, so we could switch contractors anytime we want.
Right, to the state, it's our liability.
Yeah, it's our liability.
The state uses.
The contractor from doing something, we're paying the contractor. We approved to pay a contractor to move the radium.
And he has his own bonding. And so if he, once it leaves the town of Monument, we're no longer responsible for it. He's responsible for it.
Okay, then what do we? I'm confused.
Because it's a state. Because the state said so.
In our discussions with the state, they, they use the term bankruptcy multiple times. I think they, in their thought process, they think that it's more likely that the business, WRT in this case, would go bankrupt than the town of Monument. And so they, they are looking at us as the owner to put this money aside in case WRT just packed up and left.
And, yeah, making sure that if they did go bankrupt, we would find another contractor promptly.
And all makes total sense. It's just disappointing that it was last minute information.
I would like going forward for us to track the cost of doing this and the radioactive stuff as opposed to shutting the well down and drilling another one, you know, that might not be, you know, this liability to it. Because once you start talking nuclear waste, you know, everybody starts to flip out. And so I was under the impression this contractor, and maybe that's their concern, is that contractors start doing things under the table and that they shouldn't be. But, uh, I'd like to see the costs. start doing things under the table and that they shouldn't be, but I'd like to see the costs have be, have a rec- a good record of the cost. So going forward, if it's necessary, if this gets out of control, I'd like the option of being able to shut this well down and drill another well, and it may be cheaper than dealing with nuclear waste. And Steve, I think we have that in the budget, right? We have that, that line item is in the budget for what the radium removal contract is for every year.
Yeah, correct. That's a five-year contract that we are under right now. So for the next five years, WRT is responsible for disposing of any of the waste.
And so every year we can update you on what that cost is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it roughly ninety thousand dollars a year.
Right. Okay.
And I think, I think the, to trustee Stevens' point, this also supports why we need to continue to push the loop project, because in this situation, if this cost got overwhelming, we could, we could pay the cost of drilling a new well, and that well could possibly have radium in it six months after we drill it.
Right, you're exactly right, because what the loop project would allow us to do is shut some of our wells down for a certain amount of time.
Right, and we can't
Probably be one of the wells that we would look at not using as much as we do today.
And we can't, and there's no guarantee that there'll be radium in this well six months from now. We, yeah, we might be doing a lot of work to protect our community that's not necessary, so.
Are you just looking for a nod from us to send the money, or is that?
Direction, just looking for direction from the board that I can write the check tomorrow.
I was on the impression, and I think it was my fault, that, that Mike was gonna present some options for the board, and then we come back with a resolution as the custom is for the board to when appropriating funds. It sounds like the timeline has been moved up because it isn't appropriation of funds. I think it would be more appropriate for the board to make a motion directing Mr. Foreman to spend a specific amount of money for this service.
Is it okay for us to do that from a discussion item?
There, the, I would, I think so. I think we have loose rules, but we have customs, and I think that so long, I'm more concerned about it being an appropriation of funds and having some formality associated with that.
But we can do that from a board motion.
Yeah.
How would you like us to word that as a motion?
I don't know what the dollar amount is. I would ask Mr. Foreman's help with that.
Hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-two dollars.
Or I think the motion should be something like, and it should be phrased as an order, the board orders Mr. Foreman to spend appropriate
Hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-two dollars.
Hundred and twenty-two thousand and twenty-two dollars.
Assurity to the state for radium removal for well nine?
Yes.
Okay. I move to allow Mr. Foreman to appropriate one hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-two dollars to send to the state as surety for radium remover, for radium removal for well nine.
Second.
We have a motion of second, Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
That motion passes seven-zero. Takes us to item eight, public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone here who would like to make public comment? Ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees, for hearing me yet again. Kristi Monborg, owner of Dragon Fly Yoga. When I sat through your presentation, the only thought that went through my mind is I'm ruined. My business is ruined. I've spent five years building this business. I've been, I've spent five years growing a community of like-minded people to come together to practice yoga on the lake. The people, as you've heard from when I came a couple of meetings ago, were from Monument. And I, my inbox is full of inquiries, when are you gonna have classes at Monument? When are you gonna have classes at Monument? Because the season has begun. My season will begin, would have officially begun at Monument Lake Memorial Weekend. I operate thirty-two days out of the season. The season is Memorial Weekend till Labor Day Weekend. Out of those thirty-two days, in twenty-twenty-one, I served one hundred and sixty-six people. That is it. I ran one class on Wednesday at eight AM in the morning. Ten people come and they go. No crowds whatsoever on a weekday morning ever in the five years that I've done business there. And then Saturdays, eight AM and ten AM, that's it. Ten people per class. They come, usually they carpool if they can, and then they go. Eight AM, no crowds, Saturday morning, ever. By ten AM, it starts to get crowded. By noon, oh, it's peak time. And echoing what the chief had said, from ten AM to four, that's when it's busy. It really starts to die down at two PM. My job is to be very observant and to be safe with everything that I do to keep myself safe as a woman operating in outdoor recreation business, to keep my students safe. I observe weather, I observe people, I observe vehicles. And so I see what is unsafe on the lake. I see, I have to just keep everybody safe. I occupy a total of thirteen hundred square feet on a thirty-acre lake when I'm running the class, because we all anchor down. I keep everybody together. And when I started in twenty-seventeen, I had forty-five people total come, and so now I have one hundred and sixty-six. COVID was different. It was an anomaly as far as what business would be. That was two hundred and eighty-eight people that I served. People came out in droves because they needed something to help relieve them of the stress that they experienced due to COVID, and they were so grateful to have one of very few options that were available during COVID. That normalized in twenty-twenty-one. My, what I see, because I have to be observant, I'm trying to be respectful to all the other fishermen, I instruct all of my students to do the same. The boat ramp area, it becomes unsafe when people are inflating their boards, which takes ten to fifteen minutes on the boat ramp, when they should be doing it away from the boat ramp, when people set up their blankets, their picnic blankets or whatever on the boat ramp, when people park their cars on the boat ramp. I've seen it all. And if that area was officially designated as launch area, all the way from the pier to where that ramp ends, it would be safer. So I just hope that, you know, I know you have to change the code in order to even make this possible for me anymore, but I hope you'll see the human element to this. I mean, I'm I'm sure I'm visibly emotional about it, because I don't have an option. When I listened to the Tri Lakes presentation, I was like, it's gonna be me. I'm gonna have situational poverty. It doesn't work out for me, and I don't I'm not saying that you guys have responsibility for that, but just so that you see the other element of what's going on with this. And I have immense respect for what you guys do. It's incredible. Please always come out to the lake, make sure it's safe. It's awesome. So thank you for your time, and thank you for hearing me, and I, my question is, I hope for a positive outcome this season. I know you have a lot to work on that with that, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So anyone else who would like to make public comment in person? Mr. Whitechullis, do we have anyone online wishing to make public comment? Okay. All right, in that case, we will move to item nine, board authorization items. Cancellation of June sixth, Mr. Foreman?
Would like to respectfully request that we cancel the regular meeting on June sixth.
Okay, is the board in agreements with that?
Hi.
I have some questions. What's the status on the, I think we requested an ordinance to ban the truck stops in the, in our land use code? And I was just wondering what the status of that is.
That was removed.
Good evening. Megan Harrington is still working on the industrial standards, and that went to planning commission this past month. And will be coming to the board on June twentieth, and she does have something to discuss regarding that within the industrial standards.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so is the board in agreements with canceling June sixth?
Yes.
One question I have, is there anything that that means in terms of the lake permit, we're gonna go a month before we even have another discussion about that, because we'll be canceling the next meeting?
Ms. Hogan didn't, didn't you already suggest June twentieth for the lake permit?
When you had your previous discussion, yeah, you said that we would come back and talk about it in a month, so I was planning on putting it on that June twentieth agenda.
And there's nothing we could decide on as an interim solution, since it's gonna be such a delay now?
I think we'd be putting ourselves in a bind with ordinance. Did you, I think we'd be putting ourselves in a bind with ordinances if we didn't give enough time to review all that for town staff. Okay. So from the sounds of it, June sixth meeting is canceled.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, resolution authorizing town manager to file the twenty-twenty-one audit. Mona?
Thank you for my first
Her joy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. We would like, can you hear me? We respectfully request to include a resolution on July fifth agenda to authorize the town manager to file the twenty-twenty-one audit with the state of Colorado. This is no different than what we've done in the past. At that time, so on July fifth, the auditors are going to present the audit report and also the twenty-twenty-one audited financial statements.
Okay. Any concerns from the board about that?
I like the idea of the audit presentation. Do we need a resolution to authorize the town, or is the once the audit is complete, does it not automatically go to the, to the? We're required to have a resolution for you to give me the power to file it with the state. Okay.
It's another, it's a, and we've discussed this before, it, it's administrative and ceremonial because you don't have a choice, right?
Right.
You have to do a resolution to file it with state, and it's required to be filed with state, so.
So what if the resolution doesn't pass? And then, I know that won't happen on this board, but I've been there. So
Remember those days.
I think
I, I
Maybe a little PTSD here, but but
I
I guess, to me, it just seems like it's required by the state, so if, once the presentation is done, I don't really see a need for a resolution, that it should just be part of the normal process that that's done by the state, that's mandated by the state. So I don't really see why a vote would
Could you just put it in the consent agenda then, and whatever's in there goes through?
We, we could do a resolution by consent agenda, but we would want the presentation.
Yes.
So do, do would it do anything by still having the pre- presentation if you wouldn't be taking anything away? Because you'd still be voting on, you'd still have a presentation of the item. Right?
Right.
So, and I think if we do not file, we can file an extension or a request for delay.
We have an option to file an amended, but we have to be approved in order to have this extension. And the board will review the audit report on July fifth. The date when we have to file with the state is July thirty-first, so we still have one more board meeting in between if necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
So the board is good with July fifth for the resolution and the presentation?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then last board authorization item, twenty-twenty-three budget workshops, Ms. Herjoy.
Thank you. So we would like to include these workshops to give you an opportunity to see how the twenty-twenty-three budget is shaping up. We have requested for three dates, if that's okay with all of you.
Are these gonna be, I'm assuming these are prior board meeting workshops?
Board, it's a board meeting Monday, you mean?
Yeah, board meeting Monday.
Got it.
Okay. And are these one-hour workshops?
Um, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is the board good with the first budget workshop being August fifteenth, followed by August, October third, and October seventeenth?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Takes us to item ten, Board of Trustees Comment.
I'm sorry, I was waiting for you to ask me, are there any other board authorization items?
Oh, are there any other board authorization items?
There are two more, sorry. When I was looking at the budget calendar and I spoke with Mr. Rivera about the budget approval process, when thing came up this year, there could be an opportunity on December fifth for you to be the board that turns over the board powers to the new board that has been elected in November. And so I felt like it might be a better process that we turn the adoption of the annual budget to November twenty-first versus December fifth, so that you could be the board that approves the budget prior to turning over the powers to the new board.
You said November twenty-fifth?
November twenty-first.
Right. That would be an excellent way to do it versus having a new board approve and submit a budget that haven't had any time to review.
Exactly. So that we would, we would send out an adjusted budget calendar to you tomorrow. If you approve that.
Works for me.
All right, and then item number two, CML is looking for city managers to serve on the CML board. This is a competitive application process that requires a support letter from the Board of Trustees. I would like to submit my application with your support. So I'm requesting a board, a letter of
You said they're seeking city managers to sit on the board?
They have.
Why?
They don't have very many city managers sitting on the board currently.
They shouldn't have any.
I understand your views on that, sir. But if they're gonna have some, I'd like to be the one.
It is my belief that the CML board should be made up of elected officials and not paid staff, but I agree with you, if, if we are going to have paid staff sit on that board, then I would prefer it be you. Is any other questions or comments on that topic?
I agree.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
So you'll be bringing a letter forward?
Madeline, we'll have that ready for you in the morning. It's ready now for you to sign.
Okay, if the board's okay, I will sign that letter.
Yes.
And that doesn't guarantee you a spot on the board, though, right?
Competitive application process.
Are there any other board authorization items?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm good.
Item ten, Board of Trustees Comments. Would anyone from the board like to make comment?
I have one.
Okay.
I'm just curious. Colorado Springs Fire Department enacted a burden ban. Are, are we going to do likewise as a, as a town? Or are we gonna be working with our fire department locally to enact a burn ban in the town?
Yes, we are, we, go ahead, mayor.
I was gonna say, we are auto burn ban with the sheriff's department, so when the sheriff's department does it, it automatically includes us, correct?
I'm gonna let Erica answer that, because I'm not sure that that's
Ms. Romero doesn't have a microphone, so.
Yes, come up here.
Because I, I was talking about Colorado Springs Fire Department.
They did it off the
Well, I hope I get it right. You are correct. We will follow the county's code. As our fire reads, any fire restriction imposed by the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County in unincorporated areas of El Paso County shall apply in full to the town of Monument, Colorado during such times as the county restrictions are in place. So we are definitely following this closely. We've been in communication all weekend, and we're notified of the update and asked to participate in the press release and take a united front as we battle these as we battle these, um, fire restrictions and extremely, uh, painful fire, uh, situations this, um, summer. So, uh, yes, we will, um, collaborate with them and follow the, follow the lead of our Tri Lakes Fire, um, Fire Chief.
Thank you. Other board comments?
Uh, I, I do have one thing, I, I feel like with us, especially with us missing a, a meeting here, again, and last time we were gonna bring up the lake use, but that would mean, people who spoke today would be missing six of their business days, just for this added delay that we're, we're gonna have by missing the meeting. And I feel, um, if, if, to me, I just, something about that doesn't seem right. I feel like we've, we've had a lot of time, and, uh, I, I just wanna, I guess, ask one more time if there was an interim solution we could do with a business that was already permitted prior.
Mr.
I'm new to this.
Mr. Foreman, Ms. Vanen Hook, do we have any, have we had any other applicants currently for a, um, business license at the lake?
We haven't had any applicants because we haven't had an application process for this, for this year. Um, we had another business in addition to Dragonfly Paddleboard Yoga call and ask about it.
Say that last part again, you hadn't.
Another business that had previously had a license, they did call about it.
Okay. Would, would it be an option to do some sort of, uh, temporary permit?
Yeah, remember, it would be totally against the existing ordinance that we have on the books today, to allow a business to operate on public land.
Now, what, what did we do in previously, I thought we allowed, I thought it said in the presentation.
We did, we did, we did allow them to, we did allow two license permities to be out there. We, I think we just found out that it was against our ordinance, is that correct?
Well, it was, I don't know when it was found out, but it was discussed this past fall that it was against our town code.
Right, and so that's when we made.
So what exactly is against the code of business being on public land?
Operating on public land.
Operating on public land.
Yeah, specifically a mobile vendor.
Right.
So, is there?
You could change the ordinance.
When we do, um, permits for use of public lands, like at our parks and stuff, there's nothing, a special event permit, there's nothing in there, um, clarifying whether they will make money or is it a business or not, is there?
It does require a business license for operators.
But, okay, so what I'm saying is, I rented, uh, the pavilion at, um, Dirty Woman Park, so.
That's a park reservation, not a special event.
Exactly.
But that's public land. So, how?
You're not operating.
How do you know, it didn't ask me.
We expect you to be on schools.
It didn't ask me. The que- the question wasn't there.
Yeah, you didn't.
I even put down a business name.
What about the food trucks that are coming in and out of the town?
They're on the street.
It's not public?
It's not, we don't own that.
The streets?
Well, we do the streets, but I'm saying, when we're talking about public lands, we're talking about our parks.
So then we need to make a, it state that it's the parks or the lake versus public land, because the town owns all of the streets, and we do have food trucks that are mobile. I bet you, many that I see probably haven't come to the town for business use permits in our town.
Quite a few of them have business licenses with the town.
Right, but I'm saying that there's no way you know that all of them do.
No.
So then the new ordinance should be reflective of the specific areas of where they'll operate.
Okay.
There's a lot of information that I feel like still has to be gathered and a lot of data from the police department as well as the town staff. So I don't see how we could possibly grant an exception that goes against our code and not open ourselves up to any type of liability with other businesses that want to open.
Okay. Any other suggestions or comments on that? Okay, we will, uh, continue with board comments if there are any others.
Mayor Wilson, I'd like to, uh, thank Haley Chapin for the very detailed presentation that she presented on Tri Lakes Cares. When I look at the different charities that, uh, my family would like to donate to, and listening to, to the detail that she presented, especially in a smaller, uh, community, I, I think that, uh, the detail that she presented was, um, very informative, and, um, I really appreciated it. I just, um, I didn't ask her this question, but, you know, I think one thing that if they, that they could do is maybe put their annual report out on their website, um, as a nonprofit, and then that would be one hundred percent transparency, and I'm not, uh, countering the fact that there isn't transparency, but, um, I just think that they're a really great organization, and all that they do for our community, you know, in the areas is phenomenal. So, um, as I look to think about the, um, charities that we give to, I think they're gonna be higher up on our list, um, uh, in, in thinking about the presentation that she, uh, presented tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, item eleven, executive session, uh, trustee Romanella, do you have a motion for executive session?
I do, Mr. Mayor, I move to enter an executive session to discuss three separate matters pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A and four B, to discuss the town police department's use of two F funds to purchase two fifty-nine Beacon Light Road from the town's Public Works Department, pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A, four B, and four E, to obtain legal advice and develop a negotiation strategy and instruct negotiators regarding the acquisition of a fee interest in real property at the southeast corner of Second Street and Beacon Light Road for a well water project, and pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, four oh two four A, four B, and four E, to obtain legal advice to develop a negotiation strategy and instruct negotiators regarding the acquisition of a temporary construction and a subsurface waterline easement at one eight two five five Davidson Street, and then return to open meeting at the close of executive session for the purpose of taking any formal action deemed necessary.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Hogan, will you take role?
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Um, before we go into executive session, will we be conducting executive session in here? So, okay. Okay, we will, uh, recess for five minutes and meet in the upstairs conference room, returning to the boardroom after.
Are one of you guys gonna call?
Call her on, we'll call because I don't see her as a presenter on the teams meeting.
Trust. Trustee Shaining, are you on the teams meeting?
She's got her hand up, right? No?
Oh, wait, let me move over here.
Okay.
On Hermute or Armute? Okay, trustee Shaining, are you with us?
Okay, I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
Or, I mean, I can talk.
Okay, we have returned from executive session. Um, we have several motions. Trustee Romanella, would you like to make those motions?
Shall I make them one at a time, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, I move that we give, uh, the town manager direction, uh, to seek, uh, planning, uh, on our buildings and, uh, growth and potential for, uh, police station at two fifty-nine and continue with, uh, Cynthia's, uh, Mitchell, uh, planning for Public Works.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Um, is any clarification required before we go on with vote?
Okay.
We're, we're not using those, those don't apply.
I, I would like clarification.
Okay.
On what was motioned.
We are, the, so the motion is for the town to move forward with a plan that involves two fifty-nine, the future of two fifty-nine, and the future of the public work, the, uh, the future, continued future of a public works building.
And Mayor, could you clarify that by adding also that we will not use two F funds?
And, okay, that won't be part of the motion. Does he have to redo it if it needs to say that?
I think the, um, the key point is that, that the motion, uh, I think both everybody needs to be on the same page as to what the motion means. I think that there was some disagreement there, so perhaps we could rework that. And what, what I heard was, um, let's, let's try again, the motion is to, uh, direct Mr. Foreman to, uh, do a space study, um, or, or, or get quotes for a space study to bring those results back to the board for review, to determine, uh, the best, uh, future growth for the police department and the public works department, and this future growth will not contemplate the use of two F funds.
Do we say that? We'll consider that the motion.
What you say.
Okay. So now we have a motion, a second, Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Trustee Ramo- Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
I don't see Mayor Portem Elliott on the teams meeting.
She didn't respond.
Okay. We will consider, um, Mayor Portem Elliott absent at this point. Uh, would you like, trustee Romanella, would you like to do the next?
Um, yes, I move to instruct staff to research and bring to the board a resolution authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the property interests at the southeast corner of Second Street and Beacon Light Road, necessary for the town's water well project.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Ms. Hogan?
Uh, state that again.
I move to instruct staff to research and bring to the board a resolution authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the property interests at the southeast corner of Second Street and Beacon Light Road, necessary for the town's water well project, also known as Chopstick.
Go ahead, Ms. Hogan.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Elliott? Sorry, she's not in, Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, let's see if I do this one right, I move to instruct staff to continue to negotiate, uh, temporary, uh, construction and subsurface waterline easement at one eight two five five Davidson Street, and bring us back results as of June first?
June twentieth.
Okay.
The next time if we don't agree, then we can bring back.
And, and bring us back to results at the, the June twentieth meeting.
Second, we have a motion, a second, Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Shaining?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.